Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning. Let's get started with Legislative and Human Resources Committee for Tuesday, April 24th. Is there any public comment today? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from April 10th meeting?
Move it.
Moved by Commissioner Vox, support by Commissioner Womack. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item three, Administrator Office Performance Measurement. Five minutes.
My best to keep this under five minutes. Have my stopwatch going.
Yeah, we're gonna time you.
Well, the Administrator's Office continues to do excellent work. We feel very confident about our performance, but you would be the judge, of course, and I'm here to present as your Administrator Controller for the first time. We have a 12-member staff that is separated between administration, which includes several people who work on policy recommendations and actually carry a big part of the load for me in carrying out my role. And then, of course, we have the Board Office, which, of course, supports you in carrying out your role. The Legal Division, which is critical in carrying out its role, and we're very thankful for all of them and the good work that they've done over the past year. If you take a look at our report, you'll see it divided into significant accomplishments and then goals and measurements on the following pages. And I'm gonna hit a few of the accomplishments and then talk a little bit about where we're headed over the next year. One of the big things that happened this past year, as you're aware of, is the Community Action merger. We created one department, which includes the Community Development and Housing Department, and now the Community Action Group. And it's called the Kent County Community Action Department now. This was a tremendous effort on the part of several individuals. I'd like to thank Susan Cervantes, who's now our new director, for her steadfastness in making sure that we transitioned. Like to take the time to thank Steve Duarte from Fiscal Services for all of his work. Matthew Van Zetten, who really was the spearhead to get this on the Board's agenda moving it forward. We worked with the city of Grand Rapids to make sure that there was a change in the agreement that we had, an inter-local agreement, to get that done. And we are now, since October 1st, fully integrated. And I feel very confident that the decision that we made was a good one. You'll hear more about the Community Action Agency as time goes along, but we're very happy. They're now located at the Human Services Complex, one location. We moved the department from A.D. T. Olney. And so the staff are joined and doing a fantastic job. Now, the Kent County Front of the Court Community Engagement Task Force, several of the Board members here were involved with that project. Commissioner Corndyke was on that committee. Commissioner, let's see. Voorhees was on that committee. Commissioner Dave Bukowski was on the committee. He chaired it. And that committee actually created several recommendations. One of the key ones was to identify what we would do with the additional officers that had been identified, the Board had approved, to work on managing some of the outstanding warrants. And we feel that since that time, we have a good relationship with that committee. We haven't heard any complaints since that recommendation came through. We feel very confident about the work that was done there. The last year, we also transitioned Darryl Labio into retirement, and I took over his job, as you know, back in January 28th. His retirement after 22 years. And I wanna give a real shout-out to the staff that made that transition happen. If it wasn't for the Board Office, the Legal Department Office, the Administrator's Office, we wouldn't have gotten that done. They've really been very supportive in that transition. We didn't miss a beat. We made sure that the budget was completed on time, got it in front of you all. We lost Tom Dempsey during that transition as well, as you know. Staff shouldered the responsibility for the Legal Counsel Office admirably. And we could have dropped the ball, but we didn't. And I just wanna say thank you to them for their hard work and their commitment to making sure that things ran well. One of the other things that the Board was involved with, that staff supported you for, was the Kent County Land Bank Authority. We reviewed the Land Bank Authority and made several recommendations, which included increasing the transparency of the authority. And we also made sure that the lead task force received information from them. Actually, they pulled information from them and helped to make their report even better. So they were very open to the response that was made or the request that was made. PFOs and contaminated groundwater was another significant thing that we experienced over the last year. Legal Counsel Department Administration worked hand-in-hand with our Health Department to make sure that communication was getting out to our local townships and our community. I made sure that we were working with the state of Michigan to make sure that we were receiving the support that was needed to resolve that issue. And it's ongoing, working very close, hand-in-hand with the Department of Public Works, making sure that they receive the support that they needed, working with the airport now with regards to some of the issues that they're facing. We've become quite a support for outlying departments in this issue, especially from the Legal Division. Legislative successes. One of the key roles for this committee, of course, is to make sure that we have legislative priorities ready to go, working with our legislators. We were very successful this past year in making sure that some of our issues were addressed. We dealt with reimbursement of childcare funds, making sure that we received all that was due us, was very successful in getting that done. We worked with the Department of Health and Human Services through our legislators to make sure that we had adequate support in the Kent School Services Network, increasing the number of pathways to success coaches in the schools. And we also continue to work with them. We're currently working with them now on mental health issues, as you know, making sure that that's in front of them, making sure that the county doesn't get left out of the equation. Also, revenue sharing has been another topic that we've been addressing with them, making sure that we remain whole. As you know, the credit rating, the AAA credit rating was received again for the county this past week. We were in New York. Of course, that work doesn't begin in January of 2018. That work was happening throughout last year. And we're very, very pleased to know that we again have AAA ratings for Moody's and Standards and Poor's for the 19th consecutive year. So it's been, it's actually 20 years as of this year. The Dispatch Authority, we have been working diligently with that group, making sure that the 70 cents per month was passed in November of 2016, and working with the local townships, making sure that the agreements were in place, that we have a plan to move that forward. We are currently working with the city of Grand Rapids, the Sheriff's Department, to make sure that we do have a plan, as was indicated in months past and years past. So all of that to say, it's been a very busy year. We feel very confident that this year will be much of the same. Looking at our individual measurements, I've probably overrun my five minutes. If there are questions related to any of these, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Wayman? None? Stan Steck? Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. At least you got nothing going on, right? So I'm looking at the metrics here, Wayman, and I'm struck on the, where's the one dealing with legal on page five? And I know we have a great legal department, but I'm reminded of the lawyer who advertised he never lost a case. It's because he never tried a case. But I've got all 100% across the board, everywhere. Are we that good?
On these topics, yes. I've been working with Wayman on trying to revamp these to get you some different statistics that provide additional information. So by next year, I expect this chart to be substantially different.
I don't mean it should be lower, but it just begins to beg the question whether we're measuring the right things.
And like the Prosecutor's Office, this office receives requests. We never know what types of issues we'll be facing, so we can't really project what a goal ought to be. So it's a very tricky one for us to find objectives and metrics that can identify how effective we are. So we're working through that, though.
Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. Morning, Wayman. Just a couple of observations. One is looking at page four, the, there's an indicator for outputs called number of committee or board action requests. And then on page seven, there's an indicator, number of board resolutions prepared for board consideration. I'm guessing that the resolutions for board consideration might be included in the committee or board action request. But what caught my attention there is the big jump, the big drop from '16 to '17 on the committee or board action request. Something just feels funny there.
Yeah, it depends on the types of issues and requests that are coming from the departments in a big way. Resolutions will come forth, not always based on an action request.
An action request doesn't always lead to a resolution.
So you can't do a correlation with the two. Oftentimes, the Finance Committee will approve an action request, but that action request does not end up at the Board level as a resolution, simply because of how our board standing rules are developed and how you've determined what goes in front of the Board in terms of a resolution or a decision that the Board needs to make.
The, this large draft, there's twice as many committee or board action requests in 2016 as board resolutions, but the numbers are fairly similar in 2017, which just, you know, seems unusual. But if you're confident about those numbers, then I just wanna point that out. The other thing is, just I guess for us, and that's the very last measure, which is the number of citizen applications, which dropped considerably. And I think that's maybe a little bit on us as commissioners to make sure we get the word out about that, to help in any way that we can. So I just wanna make note of that as well. That's something that we've talked about often, and we just, it's one of those things we gotta just keep on top of and keep working on. It's important for the county.
The Board Office, as you know, sends out a request to the community around August each year, I believe. And we, even before then, we do interact with the public. We interact with community leaders, and I know you do. It's really difficult to project how many folks are going to apply. Maybe it was because of the election cycle, not sure what caused the number to drop. But we'll definitely do all that we can to support you, making sure that you get applications and that you can decide to place on your very supportive of that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Corndyke?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Wayman, thank you for your leadership in the last five months' transition as the interim, and then starting this year, doing a great job so far. I really appreciate that. Question, on the second page says dollars saved to leverage collaboration with other agencies. Would it be possible for us to get a list of what all those collaborations were, so we have a better understanding of who our collaborators need?
Sure, absolutely. We keep track of those each year. This past year was a little less, was less than what we had been in prior years. As you know, this is a very busy year for us in this office, so we really focused a lot on the Community Action merger. There are a lot of committees that we were supporting, and of course, Darryl leaving. So this year wasn't as strong as we have had in the past years in terms of the number of dollars that we leveraged from community collaborations. But we can get you the list. In fact, we'll get you the list from years past so that you can see some of the collaborations that we've had in prior years as well.
More the better. Some of us might use that. Thank you.
Beth?
Commissioner Skiggs?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Wayman.
Good morning.
Just looking over some idea of what's on page seven, this is not legal definitions, but I wonder if it would be possible to get the full packet for standing committees and for the Board emailed out to us. I know that for, although some of us may live in the city or very close by, it's always a little bit difficult since we don't really have 95 access to building or thereabouts to come by and spend the time to pick up the paper packets. I know I really appreciate those paper packets in the mail. I understand that that would be too much of a pitch too far, but to be able to get the full packet and not just the agenda, I think that would help all the commissioners.
For the Board meetings?
Yes.
Okay. Talking about the agenda?
Board of Commissioner Agenda packets.
The full packet, not just the agenda.
We used to mail those out, but then tried to save money.
It costs too much to get them out.
I think we do mail upon request, so if some commissioners want it mailed, we could do that.
I'm happy to print it up at home. I'd use a little more salary on that. It would just be nice to have the convenience factor about.
We'll make sure that happens for you.
Any other questions for our Administrator? All right, seeing none, thank you, Wayman. All right, moving on to item four, Becky Becker, Public Affairs Associate's Legislative Update.
We're down to what appears to be the last eight weeks of session in Lansing, and then legislators move into their board session for the summer months. And there are three priorities that the Legislature plans to accomplish before they leave. The first one is the budget. As you know, this has been a priority of the Governor to get the budget complete before the July 1 break, and we are still on track to do that. The Legislature, both the House and the Senate today, are actually passing their version of the budget to the respective chambers. So we are on target to be done by the first or second week of June, as they have anticipated. Some of the county priorities align with the state budget, so I wanted to just review where we are with some of those items so that you have the most updated information. The Department of Health and Human Services budget, Senator Pete McGregor in the Senate was able to recommend $10 million to local public health departments. This is a significant increase in the past 10 years. I don't think local public health departments have received an increase like this ever before. Now, it is only one chamber that is recommending this, but having that in there for conversation is certainly a positive aspect. In addition, the Governor had recommended $4.4 million for PFOs funding. This is on top of the supplemental that was passed before the end of the year for PFOs funding. $2 million of that goes directly to local public health departments, so that's significant, especially for Kent County for our efforts. And also, some of that money is used for other emerging issues, fever, intrusion, infectious disease. So that's a nice bump in funding for local public health departments to handle some of these emerging needs. Also, both the House and the Senate have concurred with the Governor's recommendation, and Wayman pointed out, pathways to progress, which the county was able to receive more coaches out. The Governor recommended funding at $20.9 million, and the school success partnership program at $500,000. And so it appears that both the House and the Senate have concurred with that. That's great news. It's the same funding as the current year, so we will have an opportunity to apply, hopefully, for some additional positions. In the license and regulatory budget, that's where the indigent defense program is funded in the Senate. Senator Nolenberg did put $46 million in for the commission. However, he made some changes in the Governor's proposal. He recommended taking an additional $15 million for local units of government to come to the state, then only to be turned around in the form of grants back to the locals. Senator Nolenberg removed that and just simply allowed the local unit of governments to keep that money. That will certainly be a negotiating item with the Governor's office, but it appears that Senator Nolenberg is being very sensitive to the situation with local units of ours indigent funding. He also put boilerplate in, which I think is very important, because it indicates that grants shall not be distributed until the amount of state appropriations equals the amount necessary for local units of government to fund the indigent defense programs according to the commission recommendations. I think that's significant. It is just boilerplate, but it sets the tone that the Senate wants to have a lengthier conversation with the Governor's office about the indigent program. So we're excited about that development with Senator Nolenberg. In the general government budget, that's where they house the revenue sharing within the Department of Treasury. The Governor had recommended eliminating the current-year 1% increase and not giving counties any type of revenue sharing increase. Senator Thomas from Midland recommended restoring that 1% increase in the current-year budget and adding an additional 1% increase in the county revenue sharing. That totals about $4 million. So that's good news there. We still have a ways to go. The House just concurred with the Governor's recommendation, so we do have some work, but we do have some champions in the Senate that we can rely on. The second issue for the Legislature deals with Michigan State University Larry Max's situation. There are two different proposals, one from the Senate, one from the House, that are currently in conversation within the House of Representatives, the House Law and Justice Committee. The Senate has already passed their proposal. It does come with a significant amount of controversy. In the Senate proposal, it offers a one-year window, which an individual may offer up a civil lawsuit going back 21 years to 1997. So it's retroactive statute of limitations. Going forward, it has a 30-year statute of limitations. Currently, the statute of limitations is seven years. That has been very problematic, especially to the business community. Some individual lawyers have challenged the legality of that. That is in the House Committee. However, the House is choosing to take up their version of the package they introduced two weeks ago, an 18 bill package, dealing with their version of. A lot of it, it deals with reporting requirements, beefing up reporting requirements for medical personnel, those that are required to report, teachers, nurses, doctors, coaches, how they handle the reporting mechanism. It offers a two-tiered. System dealing with how we handle individuals that actually have sex abuse material on their computers. It offers more penalties. It allows more rights for the crime victims when they're doing impact statements. So that is the goal. They're taking a different approach from what the Senate took. Whether they mold them together is still unknown. They're under some conversation. Speaker of the House was very frustrated that the Senate moved their package so quickly. He believed that it needs more deliberation. So I think you'll see the Senate, the House, take a slower action, but whether they mold those two into one package or just send both to the Governor and let him decide it is still under consideration. The third piece that the Legislature wants to accomplish before they begin to do the work requirement for Medicaid recipients. This is legislation that was introduced by Senator Mike Shirkey at Senate Bill 897. It was passed by the Senate last week. It comes with a great deal of controversy between Democrats and Republicans. It spurs from a, some guidelines offered in January, allowing for the first time in 50 years, a work requirement for Medicaid recipients. Right now, Michigan has about $2 million, $2 million people on Medicaid. Of that, there's about 683,000 that are on Healthy Michigan, which is the Medicaid expansion that Michigan moved to several years ago. It's that group of people that Senator Shirkey's targeting. He did move legislation. There are several carve-outs. If you are pregnant, if you are medically fragile, if you have some other disabilities, you are not included. But otherwise, able-bodied citizens between the ages of 19 and 64 will be required to produce 29 hours of work each week. This doesn't begin until 2019, because the state will need to request a waiver from the federal government. There have been a few other states that have done this. One state has been pushing until far is not. We believe that the House will also move on this legislation. What is unknown is how the Governor will react. We're kinda getting mixed messages from the Governor. He has said privately that he might support this issue. However, publicly last week, he did express some concerns with the bill as it passed the Senate. I know he'll be meeting with several healthcare executives, getting understanding from their perspective in the next couple of weeks. But this is an issue I think we should watch closely. It could have an impact on the state as well. There are other issues that are at least being brought up with the Legislature but not likely to be approved before the June recess. One of them regards tipping fees. Senator Mike Noth did introduce a tipping fee increase to $4.44. For time, right now, I think it's about $36. Earnings about $47 million to go for recycling and other type of programs. It was included in the balanced budget, but neither the House or the Senate have included it in their version of the budget. That doesn't mean this issue is dead. I think what this signals is that this is probably a lame-duck issue. The Senate is most likely to pass the bill before, even in June, however, the House has indicated that they will not take this up until after the November elections. So this is an issue that still has a long life as far as the Legislature intends to information. The Governor has also now announced a school safety program, and I think you'll start to see both chambers start to look at that, offering $20 million to help schools with their, how they access safety, how they implement, whether it's locks on doors, whether it's more safety personnel. But he's offered $20 million to help with that, creating a commission. It's the task of the commission to come up with best practices from around the country, what is the best weight and which to provide schools our safety mechanisms going forward. So I think you will start to see a lot of information in committee hearings still on the school safety. Also, good news that the federal government has announced that $123 million will come to the state of Michigan for our veterans facilities, both Grand Rapids and the Detroit area. The state of Michigan had offered $42 million, which was matched by the federal government. So $38 million will go directly to the Grand Rapids Veterans Facility, a new facility, as well as $42 million for a. as well as $42 million for a facility in the Detroit area, southeast Michigan, to be built new. So there's some good news there as well. That is my report for this morning. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Wow, great report. Thank you. Commissioner Bonk.
Yes, Becky, I have a couple of questions for you. First, on the tipping fees. Will we see some of that money returned to the locals? I mean, we got a large DPW here and move a lot of trash and do a lot of recycling and all sorts of things. So will we see some of that money come back to us ever?
It should. However, I think for this issue, because it is still new in the process, having it just been introduced, there are a lot of issues like that still to be introduced. So unfortunately, I don't have anything definite to provide to you. I think we'll probably get more detail as this issue progresses forward through the legislature. Senator Nofts, who's the bill sponsor, is a very aggressive bill sponsor, so he's not planning to introduce this unless you want to move it. That's his history. So I think he would be very receptive and open to understanding what the needs of the local units are. He's very connected to this local Battle Creek area, so I think there's an opportunity to have those conversations.
Okay, and then my second question concerns the PPOS and the money going to the health department. Are there restrictions on that funds that prevent it from going back to, like the DPW, we just put in several filters for the people in the community? We can do a lot quicker action sometime than going all the way through the state, but are there such restrictions that the money that we spend on some of these kind of issues, will can we have that reimbursed through this?
It does go directly to the local public health departments. I believe it's either an application process of some sort. I think Kent County has accessed money recently from the supplemental that was passed before the end of the year. Whether there are any specific restrictions, I don't know, but I'll find out for you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kornick.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Becky, for the report. Revenues, are they going to be up this year, or what are we looking at for additional dollars in the budget for next year? And then, along with that, is any additional funding going to be appropriated for fixing our roads at all?
It doesn't appear, to answer your second question first, it doesn't appear that there'll be additional money from what they spent, I think, in February when the legislature did a supplemental for road funding. There was an amendment offered by Senator Hertel in full appropriations committee. I think it was a $400 million amendment that was rejected by Republicans. He suggested taking it out of our Budget Stabilization Fund, which is very helpful, over $1 billion, it's rejected. So there still will be efforts. I believe you'll see that again on the House and Senate floor for the road funding, but I don't see that coming to fruition yet. It's not coming out of the Republicans. As far as the overall budget, it appears to be a somewhat flat budget. However, it's an election year, so it's there's always creative funding available at the last minute. There is a revenue estimating conference that I think happens in the next two weeks, will give us a better understanding of how much money is available, and I'll be certain to get that to you as soon as I can.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ponsting.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Becky, not really a question, I just wanted to thank you and your firm, along with Michigan Association of Counties for lobbying for, and on behalf there's a growing number of representatives and senators that are former county commissioners, and I just wanted to highlight the fact that there were three that really stood up. You know, McGregor putting the money into the health department, Molinar and Stamos, those are huge. So as county commissioners, if you get a chance today, you don't have to talk to them personally, but just call their office and thank them for standing up. I don't know if it's going to make it all the way through, but it's always tough to find people that are willing to take a stand. So I appreciate your efforts on lobbying their viewpoints, so.
Well, thank you. We are very fortunate to have the leadership we have in the Senate and the House. I think you have some very strong advocates on your behalf, so I feel encouraged about this budget process and some of our priorities coming to fruition.
Any other questions? Commissioner Telling.
Morning, Becky. Wanted to ask whether you, well, six or seven years ago, the county had a subcommittee task force that looked at septic leakages and the effect on the Grand River watershed. And my understanding is there's a couple of House bills that are looking at a statewide septic ordinance, 5752 and 5753. I'm wondering if you have any knowledge of what's happening with those, what the politics of them are that you could share, or perhaps something that you could look into for us?
We'd be happy to look into. I have not heard anything being discussed, but that doesn't mean that there aren't conversations going on. I will get some more information.
Thank you.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Becky. A question on the consideration of work requirements in Healthy Michigan. What is the deliberation suggesting would be the impact of that? I mean, I'm presuming, as I look at that, that the number of enrollees now, which is about 685,000 Healthy Michigan enrollees, that that would decline. What's the deliberation suggesting? What kind of decline, and where would these people go?
Well, I don't think those impact statements are fully thought out or thought through. I know from the bill sponsor, he truly believes that there are individuals that are receiving Healthy Michigan funding that could be working and should be working. That doesn't mean to say that he doesn't believe that we should also continue to have the healthcare coverage available. It's the option of bringing them back into the community, make them a valuable resource as far as empowering them to make money, but also he is open to continuing that healthcare coverage and leaning off, if you will, moving them forward, whether it be two or three years. But yes, the goal is for able-bodied citizens to be self-reliable, but also being very wary that just because you're holding a job doesn't mean that it comes along with healthcare coverage. Actually be just making decisions even worse. Yesterday, in a meeting with him, he talked about the fact that he was talking to an individual who gave someone a raise and a bonus, and the individual started crying because they would lose their Healthy Michigan benefits. So while they thought they were empowering this individual, they were actually hurting them in the long run. He was very sensitive to that. I think this issue has a long way to go, but it's something very new to the state of Michigan and clearly have to be very deliberate.
Well, I think a number of us would support that direction. I'm just wondering, because there's likely to be consequences, and what are they, and what have other states seen that have done that? Maybe none have been as far along as we have.
This is very new. Again, the federal guidelines just came out in January. There are a few other states that are beginning to implement this, and as I said, there was one actually being sued, so that's moving through the process. So unfortunately, there aren't any takeaways from other states, because this is the first time in 50 years that this has been an option for states. So you're right, there could be a lot of unintended consequences. We think Senator Shirkey will be very deliberate and thoughtful, as well as the governor, who has been very skeptical of this situation. He's been very supportive of Healthy Michigan. He was a champion of it. So he wants to move very closely, very carefully and slowly to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, hello, Becky. Good to see you again. Something that you might want to speak on, but if you're not able to answer some of these questions, I would hope that it would reach the governor's ear. When we're talking about healthcare, and I know you mentioned that it's kind of divided upon Republican and Democratic lines, but I'm just wondering if they have considered the impact on emergency rooms and alternatives that the poor and those in poverty take when they're not able to retain a doctor because they're not part of any insurance program, they're not a part of Medicaid, and how these costs still can come back to the state, the taxpayers, the impact of innocuous and communicable diseases that are out there that can linger undetected because people who can't afford to have medical care, that this can, and these diseases, they don't care Republican, Democrat, with race, classism, money. Have they actually did a study on the impact of how this can still come back to cost us more money than dropping so many people off Medicaid? And do you know the numbers of how many people could lose their Medicaid or Michigan healthcare, Healthy Michigan healthcare?
There is not an impact statement yet. I know, I will contact Senator Shirkey as well as to see if he has any documents that he could share that show what he believes is an impact. He believes that this could impact about 300,000 Michigan citizens. It's not the entire community that receives Medicaid. The governor's office is very concerned about this proposal, and that's why he will be meeting with several healthcare individuals, hospital CEOs, to get their concerns, share their concerns, because, like you said, they're going to be directly impacted. So he wants to hear from them and make sure he has all the information before he makes a decision. He's been out of the country for the last 14 days, so he's back now. So I know that, according to them, on Friday, they were scheduling that meeting with several hospital executives. So he is doing some due diligence before he makes a final decision.
And has a portion of this bill already been passed through some of our state legislation?
The Senate did approve it last week, and it is now in the House, and I would not see where that has been scheduled for committee, but it certainly could be as of today, but I would not see where they've scheduled it.
Hasn't nobody in the House or the Senate have asked for an impact statement on how this could affect the state of Michigan?
I do not know if anybody has. I'm not going to answer, but I'm sure that there have been conversations and there are public organizations doing those.
Okay, thank you, Becky.
All right, any other questions for Becky? Seeing none. Awesome report. Thank you so much. Appreciate all your work. Moving on to item four, I'm sorry, item five, purchase of development rights, selection criteria, and application cycle. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to the board to approve the 2018 Kent County Purchase of Development Rights Selection Criteria and to authorize an application cycle of May 1, 2018, through July 31, 2018. The Purchase of Development Rights ordinance adopted by the Board of Commissioners in 2002 established procedures for administration of the PDR program. By ordinance, the Kent County Agricultural Preservation Board is responsible for much of the program administration, with certain items presented to the Board of Commissioners for approval. The Agricultural Preservation Board has prepared the selection criteria to be used to rank and prioritize PDR applications. Per the ordinance, the Board of Commissioners must approve the criteria, which is reviewed annually. This year's criteria continues to focus on preservation efforts in areas with large blocks of agricultural land and considers factors such as soil, parcel size, proximity to water and sewer, proximity to other public or private preserved land. The 2018 scoring criteria is the same as the scoring criteria in 2017. No changes are being recommended. The Agriculture Preservation Board intends to seek funding to preserve qualifying application to the Michigan Agricultural Preservation Fund and Agricultural Conservation Easement Program. All applications needed to proceed through the county process to be eligible for submission to the Michigan Agricultural Preservation Fund and to the Agricultural Preservation Fund and Agricultural Consolment Easement Program. It's recommended that the county application cycle be May 2018 through July 31, 2018, to allow sufficient time to score and praise priority properties.
All right, do I have a motion? Supported by Commissioner Steck, supported by Commissioner Womack. Any questions or comments on this issue? Commissioner Telling.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to express appreciation for the very intentional way that we go about doing this work, that the Ag Board really, ongoing, has focused on the best land and starting with preserving that. And been watching this for a long time and continue to be impressed with how this program is operated and really making the best use of very limited dollars that are available to do it. Thank you.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question. Does the board, Agricultural Preservation Board, report here? I mean, have we heard from them? I mean, I would like to have them make a presentation as to where they are, what their strategies are.
We have had them report in the past. I don't know if they're scheduled this year. Will we speak to that, Mary?
Their report usually comes as part of the cooperative extension. Or they're incorporated into that department's work, so that's when you usually receive that. Sometimes they come together, sometimes the extension director has delivered those statistics on their behalf.
Well, when does that schedule? Because I guess I'm a little bit, I don't quite know where the board's going to know that there's incredible challenges from a financing perspective, and that they may be looking at changing some of their long-term strategies, whether it's consolidating acquisitions in small centers or what, but so that's what I'm looking for, some further.
Extension is coming forward in June to talk about this. There has been a citizens committee that has been looking at ways to have more sustainable program, but there are options right now.
Okay, so maybe in June we'll hear something.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I'm on the agriculture board, and I do believe they need a little more contact with our Kent County Commissioners and updates. But just looking at the history, the PDR, purchase development rights and the fundings that did come from Kent County, a lot of those fundings have been cut out or lowered, if not cut out totally. I think we still fund some of the positions of some of the people working with the purchase development rights, at least one of the people that is working with it. But as they lost Kent County funding, there's a whole lot of other people that were kind of doing matching funds that have also pulled out, but I think they need to do updates, because when I was first put on the agricultural board, it wasn't really a board I wanted to be on, because even I didn't realize, and now I feel very juvenile to say I didn't realize the impact of the economy when it comes to our farmland. Is it competitive there? Almost as competitive as it is in the city, with developers coming, buying land and starting new developments. And this farmland is very important. Our agriculture is way more important than I ever thought it was. I knew it was important, but the direct impact that it can have on our economy is something we need to focus on. Food that's coming into the West Michigan area is at competitive prices, because we can grow 22 different types of foods here and just in West Michigan alone, and there's not many states or locales that can do that. We're one of the top places when it comes to variety of foods, and I'm talking in the top five. I want to say in the top two, that can grow different type of foods, even with our crazy weather we have here. But that's because of a lot of things that I've been doing, and the importance of farmland, the wheat that we produce here. It's just unbelievable, and I thank whoever put me on that against my will for putting me on the agricultural board, and I will talk to them about us doing more updates. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments on this issue? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? All right, we will move on to item six, Circuit Court Juvenile Detention, addition of eight full-time youth specialists at juvenile detention.
Yes, this is a request, again, to add eight full-time youth specialist positions to the juvenile detention budget in the Child Care Fund. In February 2016, the board authorized renovations to the juvenile detention center, which included increasing the capacity of the facility from 69 to 98 beds to allow for housing and programming for youths currently sent to out-of-county placement and the closure of the Holy Cross Children's Staff Secure Facility. The housing portion of the project was expected to be completed and operational during the Child Care Fund 2018-2019 budget cycle, at which time it was anticipated that the court would bring forth its request for the additional staffing associated with the expansion. Funding for the additional staff is expected to be paid for by savings in out-of-county placements and the elimination of the Holy Cross contract. The project is headed, is ahead of schedule, and to keep construction moving in a timely and efficient manner, it is necessary to move youth into the new area prior to October 1. This move requires the court to fill two positions ahead of October 1. One position is needed to staff a new security control point, and one to transport youth through the facility and provide supervision in compliance with licensing standards. Due to the 24/7 operating schedule of the facility, each position requires four FT for coverage, full-time equivalent for coverage, resulting in the new, in the need for eight full-time equivalent positions. The court has requested to hire staffing during June to accommodate the changes required by the construction schedule and provide sufficient training time. Salary and benefit cost of a youth specialist is $66,800 annually. The cost for the eight specialists for the last four months of 2017 to 2019 The cost for the eight specialists for the last four months of two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen is one hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and forty dollars. The youth specialist positions are part of the Child Care Fund, and the county will receive fifty percent reimbursement for these costs. There is sufficient funding in the two thousand seventeen, eighteen Child Care Fund budget to allow for the positions to begin this year. In the event funding is eliminated or decreased, the positions will be eliminated unless continuation funding is approved pursuant to the fiscal policy on grants, contracts, and donations.
All right, do I have a motion? Moved by Commissioner Ponstein, supported by Commissioner Womack. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Wayman, I've got it in my mind what they are. But could you maybe tell me so I would reinforce that? What does the day of a youth specialist look like? What are their goals, what are their outcomes?
If someone from the sheriff's.
Stacy McGinnis or Andy Dahlhammer, one of those two folks who oversee the juvenile detention area? So with the youth specialists, I've got in my mind what they probably do and don't. What does a day of a youth specialist look like? What are their goals, what are the outcomes? Are we making successes?
Are youth specialists are responsible for monitoring the residents while they're in the facility? Any movement for the residents, they have to move with them. The staff ratio is one to eight, so for every eight residents, we have to have a staff person on the unit with them. We typically have two staff assigned to one unit. And they go to school with them, kids go to school during the day, even to meals. Any other extra activities we may have in the evening, doing hygiene, cleaning up their units. There always has to be a staff with every kid that moves throughout the building.
So it's more supervision than?
Absolutely, we do have some treatment that the youth specialists are responsible for. We run learning groups in the evening where we have the residents sit around and we do an actual learning group with them while we have them there. Our behavior management plan is cognitive behavioral therapy. And so our staff are trained to be able to work kids through any disciplinary issues that happen in the facility using that concept.
Background of someone that would want to pursue this career would be what?
They would need to either have a bachelor's degree or at least thirty college credits and some experience in working with at-risk youth.
Will we hire? Do they reflect the diversity of the population that they're serving?
Any other questions? Commissioner Womack?
So there's going to be up to ninety-eight beds, new beds in the new building. And that has already been built. Are we, before this building was built, were we having like juveniles that were coming that they just didn't have enough room for?
Well, we had what was called the Holy Cross, the Haven, Holy Cross Children's Services that was in the building next to ours. And what we did, we were crowded, we were, our facility was full. And what we would do is use those beds as our overfill, and we were putting kids in that area. Some of the problems with the Haven were, that was an open setting. So kids could potentially escape from that setting.
Is your staff better prepared to deal with the children? I would think, of course, they would be better prepared to deal with those children and keep programs that try to bring them back into the community, you know, better than some of the mistakes that they made along the way.
Yes, absolutely.
And the funding is in the Child Care Fund budget?
Yes.
Already?
Well, yes. We're using, yes, fifty percent of that is from, through the Child Care Fund.
Okay, what would that funding be doing if we weren't using it for the youth specialists and the new eight workers that are coming in?
It would probably be paying, outsourcing those same types of services.
Okay, all right, sounds good, thank you very much.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Thank you, Chair. Just to continue on with that discussion, right? So it says that the funding is expected to be paid for out of savings from out-of-county placements and elimination of Holy Cross contract. How does, how do those two things add up to the eight thousand one hundred and twenty dollars to essentially make this revenue neutral, which is what I'm hearing, or cost neutral?
I mean, right now we have, when we closed the child haven, as Stacy alluded to, there was money somewhat left in the budget for that. With the increased capacity in the detention center, should be able to, again, prevent some of the outsourcing. I mean, these, when we send a kid out of the home, it's upwards of two hundred to a little more per day for each kid that's out there. Plus, they're out of the community, they're farther away, travel for probation officers, families don't stay involved. So if we can keep them closer to home, then again, the whole system, we believe, will be a little bit better and again, work to get them into the community, back in their homes more quickly.
Yeah, I get that, I was just, how much did we spend on that last year on out-of-county? How much did we spend on the Holy Cross contract?
The Holy Cross contract was, I believe, under a million dollars.
Million dollars, and we're eliminating that?
Yes, that will be gone. We also spend upwards of, you know, well over probably two million dollars a year on residential treatment placements, you know, throughout the state.
So then this is quite the budgetary savings.
We won't be able to get rid of all that two point one million in that. And again, this is only part of the staffing ramp-up that we're going to need.
Right, because this is just a four-month sort of.
This is just to carry over until, yeah, until they kind of fix the other part, and then we're fully operational with the night. I don't want to promise that much of a savings.
Okay, but could you get me those numbers about where they've been over the last, say, year or two? Okay, thanks. All of us.
Commissioner Womack, you had another question?
Yes, Stacy McGinnis, I want to thank you for your service to our community and the work that you're doing with the youth. And I was in juvenile before, so I always wanted to know what does Waukes mean? Have you ever seen that on the building?
Yeah, Judge Waukes, there was, I think sometime way before I was born, there was, I think, believe it was Judge Waukes was very, a judge that was very into education and getting our kids some type of schooling and encouraging them when they're in the facility to pursue, be productive, and obviously some rehabilitation in the facility. And so our school program was named after that judge, I believe. And we just kind of have continued on with the Waukes, and we actually have what's called, you know, I think they named our school Waukes School, so.
Thank you, sorry to ask that question. I should have asked it thirty, forty, fifty years ago because I called my mom, "Mom, I'm in Waukes County Juvenile." Took her days to find me. But I'm glad, I'm glad that God is good and I'm here. But it's a very important question, though. If the seventeen-year-old, seventeen-year-olds are returned back to juvenile status, which I believe they should be, how would that impact our juvenile system? And would we have to build new beds to accommodate them?
We, okay, I was going to say, we currently, when we did the construction, took that under consideration. And so one of our units that we have constructed will be particularly for that particular group of students. If we have residents where we have to receive the seventeen-year-olds, that's one way detention will respond, is we do have at least some additional beds to hopefully cover some of that. And Andy's probably going to speak on what we will be doing as a county, I mean, as a court staff as a whole.
Yeah, and I'm glad you asked that, I was actually going to pop back up and mention that, that if seventeen-year-olds become part of the juvenile system, then a lot of this capacity that we had to kind of reduce the outsourcing of those youth in residential treatment will probably be sucked up by the seventeen-year-olds. So a lot of that savings that we would have realized would most likely be gone. We're expecting up to a thirty to thirty-five percent increase in our juvenile caseloads if we get seventeen-year-olds. And I guess you could probably say that they were, they would be maybe a little, a little, for lack of a better term, higher-end youth that we'd be, that we'd be either keeping past their seventeenth birthday or, you know, seventeen-year-olds that are committing more crimes, they might be a little more severe. So I guess up the board, again, we talked about residential treatment that we paid for, the whole thing would expand financially. So, yeah, hopefully they're keeping that in mind. I mean, I think we, my own opinion, I think we can do a good job with seventeen-year-olds, but it has to be funded appropriately.
Follow-up on that, but if we get the seventeen-year-olds into the juvenile, wouldn't there be a savings on the other end that they're not in our jail system?
There could be. I mean, I think it, I think what it costs to operate the jail, probably cost to operate the jail. I think a lot of long-term savings could be realized, but that's the Department of Corrections. And the county is, again, it's a, sorry, the juveniles is more of a county-funded system. So we won't realize those savings. So hopefully that's kind of factored into whatever decision.
More treatment because we would obviously be working with the seventeen-year-olds. You know, some that are perhaps incarcerated now may be worked with probation staff and in the community. And so we would provide some additional services for those kids as we do all of our juvenile, so.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions or concerns? Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. Heard a little bit about Holy Cross, and I'm a little bit confused about what they're, who they are and what their role is. I looked them up online, it looks like they're a child service provider. What's the connection you mentioned with the Haven, which I remember from years ago? But what is Holy Cross? Are they a facility?
Holy Cross, and the name may have changed. I mean, I think it's been, it's been a few different names. But no, Holy Cross was the private agency, and they are a child placing agency, a private child placing agency. I think they're headquartered somewhere on the other side of the state in Saginaw. And when the facility was opened, again, this predates, I think, both Stacy and I, when this decision was made. But, yeah, we basically hired them or contracted them to staff that facility. That was kind of our overflow for when detention got to.
The location, then, where they are providing the services is the Haven Building?
Which now houses juvenile probation officers and our surveillance workers and some of those folks hock down courtside to accommodate the.
Where are those young people now that were at the Haven and now have been displaced?
Yeah, either, again, either in Stacy's facility or in a private agency somewhere or a different place. That's where, that's where they kind of end up. We didn't, we didn't always have twenty youth, or I think it was a capacity of twenty. We didn't always have twenty, we don't always have sixty-nine. But when we do, it becomes quite an urgent need to make sure we have that access capacity.
I apologize, I'm getting more confused, but the Holy Cross now contract is serving children where? If they're no longer at the Haven?
That money is either supporting the detention facility or these residential treatments that we talk about.
So the Holy Cross contract has already been eliminated? That's where, so that money already was in the budget because that had been eliminated? I'm sorry for my confusion.
Here's what's happened, some of those dollars, kids that we had in Holy Cross, they were an overflow for the kids that were in detention, right? But they still had to be placed somewhere. And so now most of those kids are going straight to placement versus us trying to provide some services right here within the community. So it ends up costing even more. Those dollars are now going to placement and/or some that we are still keeping in our facility as much as possible. But our numbers are kind of spiking up because we've lost those beds. And so we're hoping in the long run that this addition will eliminate that problem. If that make, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it's a little.
Years way before even me, the Haven was like, I think, a respite place where children used to reside. And so that's why I said that word, so speaking from when I first started.
It helps, it's just different than I understood it from the action request here. Last question is, that last bullet there in the, in the action request talks about the fiscal policy on grants, contracts, and donations, that somehow that's going to have some pull on the potential future funding of these positions? I'm not seeing where a grant or a contract or a specific donation is involved here, how does that apply?
This relates to the.
Child Care Fund, so if the state in some way decide to reduce some level of funding, it impacts our ability to.
They pay fifty percent.
Right, right.
And that could happen.
Sometimes they don't pay us. For months.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you so much. All in favor of this action item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, moving on to Commissioner miscellaneous, any miscellaneous today? Commissioner Corndeick?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just want to give a big shout-out to Wayman and Chair Saulfeld and Steve Duarte and the Treasurer Ken Parrish for their successful pilgrimage to New York City, probably a couple of weeks ago now, and chatting with Moody's and Standard and Poor's. And twenty years of AAA bond readings from both those agencies is a big deal. So that reflects on everybody that's served on this board in the last twenty years. So thank you for bringing that home, appreciate it.
Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I also want to thank staff, I sent an email out about a week and a half ago. I know the John Ball Zoo Director, CEO testified Lansing about this ongoing issue of carnivore breeding. It's kind of really frustrating when I read the background information that the reason we're excluded was because of a typle that happened years ago, and it seems like this has just been going on and on. Why an issue as simple as this can't be resolved? Appreciate that the staff is going to draft a letter showing support from Kent County. And I encourage that they do have another committee hearing that maybe we can get County Commissioners there. I think the voice will be stronger if it's just not a not-for-profit organization teaming up with a local county. Because the economic impact, I mean, if you've been to the zoo, we've got one tiger now, or we used to have three. Would have had young tigers there that are part of the conservation program draw to that exhibit. And to the zoo, and the benefit to the county and the city. It's open and encourage that we keep, though they are separated from the county, that we are still partners. We still do own the land and the footprint that they operate on, so thank you.
Commissioner Bach?
Thank you, Chair. About every week I receive a letter like this, addressed to the Commissioners as a whole or to individual Commissioners from time to time. But there's nothing on the outcome of what happened here, and this was from Commissioner Steck's district, I believe. And it'd be nice if, you know, we had a little recap, even if we got this letter a week later, that this was handled by the Commissioner or staff handled, or this was referred to the Sheriff's Department or the DPW. And I know at times there's been overlap, I've answered Commissioners' letters that maybe it was a DPW issue or maybe it was an overlap issue. And it's sort of nice just to have a, all these are dealt with rather than, and I see these all the time, and I'm wondering, wondering what happened to that or what happened to this.
Yes, in this particular case, this is going to be referred to the Millet Subcommittee that's been formed, and they will have that in their packet this morning. So they will have an opportunity to.
So can we have a, your staff can address it and how, you know.
Sure.
Content, what needs to be done or whatever, but it would be nice to know what happens with all this and.
Absolutely, we can, we can do more follow-up, better follow-up and let you know when we can receive those. We will address it in this particular case this morning, but in the future, yes, we can do that for you.
Even if I got it a week or two later, it'd be fine.
Absolutely.
Or you just had one thing of recap, so.
Sure, absolutely.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Following up Commissioner Corndeick's comments.
Uh, following up Commissioner Cornick's, uh, comments, uh, about a different kind of bond. Um, several of you, I think possibly all of you, uh, received at least one or two solicited emails, and I'm gonna put on both of my hats here, uh, about, uh, bail bond reforms that, State Representative David LaGrande is working on. Is this ringing about? Or was I, or was I singled out?
Did I get it?
No.
Um, if, uh, uh, these were unsolicited, so it's, um, I, I should say that there's a, a great deal of information in there which is patently false. Um, and I would encourage you that if you have any questions about, uh, this reform issue, which I think would be extraordinarily helpful to the county, um, that, that I or Representative LaGrande can answer, uh, your questions. I think there is a decent amount, if not a sole amount of fear-mongering going on there. Um, it should be noted that we've been working on these bills, uh, in my capacity of my full-time job, uh, for over a year now, and it has been, um, uh, endorsed in concept, that's what they do for all bills that haven't been dropped yet, uh, by, by MAC, by the prosecutors, by the district and the circuit court judges, uh, and has a neutral role from the sheriffs. So, um, this is something that's been, I think, fairly well thought out, and I would just, uh, encourage you that if you have any questions about that email or bail reform in general, um, I would be happy to, uh, have a discussion.
All right. Commissioner Womack?
Yes, um, I just wanna thank Wayman Britt for representing the county so well last night at a very well-attended public event. And, uh, when he was introduced, um, just overwhelming applause, uh, for Wayman Britt and the decision of this Kent County Commissioner for hiring such an experience and ready to handle his duties at the helm as our county administrator that the public just was just so elated. So for those that weren't there, I can just say, Wayman did, um, represent the county well. I was glad to be there with him representing and, uh, seeing the county a little more out in the community and glad that he's out there doing those things. Also, I wanna, uh, just say thanks to Sheriff Delma, uh, for doing such a good job with the Sheriff's Department. Law enforcement across the country and even here in our own local community is like a daily conversation, um, in my community. And just with so many people that go in and out to Kent County Jail and not having people come back with hiring experiences or having the name of a certain guard, where usually there's a urban legend that there's some, some certain guard is doing things they're not supposed to or is very hard on people. To be able not to hear that at this time when law enforcement in, in these communities are at such odds and not hearing any complaints about the Kent County Sheriff Department, I think is very important that, uh, leadership in my community, um, when there's positive things that we're out front, letting them know, people know that there are, there's a lot of positive things happening and no one can be responsible for all your workers. So there will be incidents some days, but we should also voice our opinion when it's not raining, when it's not thundering, uh, when we have good days, we need to definitely, uh, give our accolades to our law enforcement that risked their life to keep us safe. Another, uh, organization we work with, Network 180, I just want to say that, uh, with the state cutting of some of those funds that are being held back and coming out of 2017, looking at our health crisis because of those budget cuts, just to say they're also doing a good job because it's, you know, it's not, uh, community panic, it's not workers that are out here that are afraid to lose their job. I know a lot of people that work with Network 180, and it seems as, as business as usual. And usually saying business as usual isn't good, but in this case, that's good.
Thank you Commissioner. Any other miscellaneous today? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned until May eighth.
I am Kent County. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
I'm Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.